To do the clients that we have because it's bank wise, it's not really that great for us. You know, we're helping the clients get it. So all the people that don't have loans right now, they're saying they probably won't get, unless they know their personal bankers, they won't get anything. So that's why the next phase when they add money to it, they're probably gonna make it. So you can't discriminate against, oh, they follow with us, or they have an account with us, call it something out of the street. Because people that don't have loans right now aren't gonna get it.
Oh, okay. Did you have a, what's that? Well, this is to, yeah, did you have a comment you wanted to address the counselor?
I think Herb was just gonna call it before he asked me to call it and explain that idea. Governmental agreement.
Oh, the tip extension.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not the extension, the modifying.
Yeah.
Amendment to form extension.
It'd be better for him to explain it than me to help.
Okay, yep, that'll work first. Thank you. Bye bye. Just said to call if you have questions when it comes to their agenda.
Yeah, I, I said, I don't, yeah, I don't think I have, I don't, I haven't gotten a recorded beat back yet. But when I sent the beat over, I sent him a letter saying, get it on our insurance, you know, because once that beat's recorded.
We are gonna be starting monitoring about probably one minute. Follow along the lead. Once the mayor asks them the public comments, go ahead and call this number. And you'll put on the speaker for them to continue to address your question.
Once it's recorded, it's off.
Oh, you're welcome. Bye bye.
So, you know, if it takes three, four days to get it to me, then I just wanna make sure we don't, you know, just our luck, we don't want somebody getting hurt there. And we don't, you know, we don't have it listed on the insurance.
If he has the question, he can just give it to us now and that way we can read it, that way you don't have to.
Call the city council meeting to order.
Augur, right?
Here.
Cullen?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Liaske?
Here.
Revara?
Here.
Judge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move down the agenda item, Commissioner Cullen came to me about a, an issue that he'd like to recommend we go to. And I'll turn it over to him.
Um, I did make contact with the park director, worker Bobby Gigi, and we discussed the parks and what we're gonna do with the parks. But under the government, the governor's request, we're gonna close all the parks right now until we have a two week period where we can determine what's gonna happen with all this coronavirus out there and people gathering. And just to make it a safer place for people that, you know, if LaSalle and Peru have closed their parks, if we leave our parks open, I don't want a lot of people coming here and gathering. I mean, it's precaution we gotta take to protect everybody, whether or not you believe in this or not. It's, it's out there and we have to do what we can do to protect the people. So as of tomorrow morning, the parks will, the canoe landing, McFederin Park and all the city parks, I plan on having them shut down for two weeks. Any gatherings we have there, hopefully the police department can run off whatever we have and just kinda keep an eye on the parks until further notice. It could be two weeks, we don't know.
I, I understand that the state of Illinois has closed down all state parks, you know, such as Madison or Star Rock. And I'm very much behind in support of closing the city parks. I hate to, but I agree with it.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I, I just saw, and I mean, I'm just asking a silly question, on the Illinois River, where is the pump house located?
It's on the Vermillion River.
It's on the Vermillion River.
Thirty foot, but that's.
That's private property, so.
So that's okay for them to be fishing there?
That's, I don't even think it's in our jurisdiction. Is it? The pump house?
It's.
That's been reported.
Yeah, it's mixture.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not even sure that's, I mean, we used to go down there for parties years ago and.
Yeah.
Uh, probably because other people didn't have anybody available, but I was always told that that's kind of a.
It's private property.
Conservation.
Yeah.
So it's, it doesn't fall, it doesn't fall under the jurisdiction of, of our city or estate?
I don't beli- I don't believe it falls under the city.
Yeah.
Um.
I, you know.
Let's say the conservation would be more.
I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of, of closing down the parks. Please no down. I just feel bad about McFederin because you're gonna go out there and, and not play on the playgrounds, you can throw a hook in there and fish a little bit if you're by yourself, but.
Well, it's just like the canoe landing. I mean, I mean, at times you can drive by there, you have cars, sometimes you don't have cars.
Uh, people use that, that track around.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm more worried about people from out of town now, since we're the only one with parks that's been coming here. That's why I think it's.
Tell me, tell me, I'm, I'm okay with closing the parks, I really am. I just feel that's gonna be a tough one.
Yeah.
Jim?
My question is, when somebody walks down there to go fishing, what are we doing to stop that? Because we don't have jurisdiction over the fact of them fishing.
Yeah, that's true.
So what, 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 what does this council want to me, the police department, do as far as that?
What, what are we talking about, Jim? Were we?
Down by the Vermillion?
Oh, by the Vermillion. Because McFederin you would have.
Oh, yeah, right, right. That, that's, that's fine. I'm talking about them parking at the top of the street, them walking down the hill, which.
Yeah.
Acts is probably gonna stop because of the fact that that's our jurisdiction.
I did talk to Bobby Gigi and I told him, I says, when the time comes, we might have to post signs that we don't want, we don't want anybody um, in this area at a certain time. And I did talk to him about making some signs up and, uh, because we had a problem with somebody driving around down there and driving through the grass, I guess, at one time. And I just said, well, you know, once we put up a sign telling people that, you know, it's closed right now, we shouldn't have anybody down there. If they're down there, they should be warned. If, if they come back, I, I think they, they should be fined.
Oh, you gotta put a, a sign out for, for down at the canoe or at McFederin, just saying that park was.
Right, right.
I think the park, unless somebody has an objection, we'll follow the governor's, uh, lens.
That's what we're gonna, we're following the governor, governor's rule right now. And that's, I, I, that's why I feel it's safest for us. We fall under his guidelines, you know.
I, I agree. I just think it should be posted that so we're not having, the police don't have to police it the whole time.
I spoke to Bob about this and, um, he was gonna get some signs put up, so, uh.
The gate should be a real sign too.
Right, the gates can be closed.
The gate should be a sign.
Lock the gate and put a, put a sign at the gate and I don't know how else.
Even if we put barricades in the entranceway maybe, I don't know, I, I'm just going off.
Easy that if we need to.
Unless anybody objects, we'll get, we'll close the gates, put the signs up and we'll follow the.
You know, every now and then, you have a car, go down there and patrol. I mean, just drive by, I mean, go across the bridge, look down there. I mean, you're gonna have people coming in eventually, coming in from other, other, other ways from, but, I mean, it's just, it's just an idea that we don't want any big gatherings, you know. I'm not afraid of one or two people, but, you know, when they find out that the parks are open here, they're gonna be coming over here and say, let's go to Oglesby. We've been through this before as, as the police department. And when everybody else shuts down, they, they seem to find a place where they can kind of be.
Once the gate's closed, canoe land, we shouldn't have that much of an issue down there. We're gonna know it's closed.
It'll be done. We'll just put it out that we're gonna follow the governor's guidelines and I think we can move on.
We can put it in, we'll put it in the newspaper tomorrow, put it on Facebook that, you know, and just tell them until further notice, until we, we determine what the governor wants out of this and what kind of, what kind of timeframe we're looking at.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I would put a two week overtime limit on it. I would say.
Until further notice.
Until further notice.
Because we don't have a timeframe. They're talking two weeks. I, I, I talked to the mayor and I, I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing anything good coming out of this, probably till the end of May or June, until we know more.
And that's really being optimistic.
Right, right.
Because I'm gonna tell you, I don't think we're gonna have any summer vacations anymore.
No, yeah, like I said, the summer's already been ruined, pretty much. But it's just, you know, it's, uh, under the circumstances, that's what we have to do, is follow the governor's rule and.
And abide by it.
Will by it. That's all I can.
Said, unless anybody opposes, we'll move on.
Yeah.
Um, I need to, motion in second to approve the minutes from the March sixteenth, uh, regular meeting and the March seventeenth special meeting.
I had a couple of, of corrections that I gave to Amy already there. Minor, being like the word, uh, from, uh, form instead of from, those type of things and some redundancies. So she'll make those edits. There was nothing major. So with that being said, with those edits being completed, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from March sixteen, two thousand twenty regular meeting, and there were no edits to March seventeen special meeting.
Second.
Augur, right?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Liaske?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Public comments on agenda items only. I have one here. Uh, so when the rate increase was dropped on the city, there was also a part where businesses, they use a lot of water, uh, doesn't end up in the sewer, will not be charged for matching sewer usage. Now, how, how about many of us that water our lawns frequently, run our, run kids' water toys and who washes cars weekly? We use a lot of water. Does that not get sent down the sewer? Well, LaSalle, from what I understand, uh, they don't do anything. Peru, it's a one time with a building permit. And not only, and not every time.
I can answer this a little bit as well. Um, so what this person is referring to is the, um, the, the, the change we just made recently to where for commercial buildings, um, they have the option to be able to put in a, an outflow meter, so they don't have to pay for their sewer costs. What is not mentioned in the comments here is, he just says, whoever this is just says the term, will not be charged for matching sewer usage. That's not entirely accurate. The, the stipulation of the ordinance specifies where the business is required at their expense to pay for not only the, the outflow meter, but the installation of it as well. So for commercial buildings, that it, it would be behoove them to, uh, they have some cost effectiveness for the, to assume that cost. Um, we don't have anything there for residential use. I'm not saying we couldn't at some point in the future, but for the examples used here for watering lawns, kids' water toys and washing cars, I don't know how much water you'd have to, to use to be able to recoup that cost you'd have to do to install a, a flow meter or something. So at this time, I don't think we have anything in the plans for that. We do have, however, um, we have credits for pool usage. Now, keep in mind, that was not put into our ordinance. We talked about that. It's not there specifically because we thought it would be a little more complicated to, to put some speci- special regulations with it and stuff. So what we have it now is, people call in, they tell us they, they're filling the pool, they give the dimensions, um, Patty in the office there takes a look how much water that is, they see the water usage, they see the difference there, and we give them a credit for it. I see no reason for us to stop doing that. That's probably the biggest use that we can do to help residents for things like that. Uh, but as far as installing, uh, outflow meters for residential use, I, I don't have any plans at this time to, to look into that.
And that's in the thousands of dollars to install those meters, correct?
So I, I don't have an exact, nobody's done it yet. I have gotten a call from one business, um, and it's probably not gonna happen because the one business that talked to me about the problem was the outflow meter location was below their parking lot. So not only would they have to pay for the meter, the installation, but then they'd have to refix their, their parking lot as well. So we haven't really looked into it a whole lot yet. I mean, to me, I'm not as concerned about it because the cost is upon the business to do it themselves. But it is, it's probably gonna cost more than a regular meter, because it's, it's gonna have to be able to process sewage and other kinds of things like that. And its location means it's even lower than with the water line that comes in. So it's probably not going to be a cheap thing. I don't have any numbers to give this individual with that though. Um, but I mean, if there is an interest in that by enough residents, we can look into it. But as of right now, no, it's probably not worth it.
Any others?
I have Drew Miriman on the phone here. Drew, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is for the whole council, every member of the council, and I'd like them to answer this question. Why do we even giving a thought of promoting an interim chief? And why can't we promote from inside our department? We got a lot of veterans that's been on this police force for a long time. And I, I just, this is kinda goofy. We're gonna hire somebody for Manuka. Um, you know, it was bad enough when we hit the mark, said we're paying him a thousand dollars a month and for what little he was doing. Um, I, I think each member of the council should tell everybody that's listening and watching why they think they're, we need an interim chief and why we can't promote out of our department. Uh, if Mr. Novak is gonna be gone, what does he care who gets the job? I mean, let's promote from inside the department and keep everybody happy.
Thank you for your question, Drew, and, and I'll be the first to jump in and then anybody else can speak. Um. Is he still speaking?
No.
He's, he's getting feedback.
Oh, he can hear the feedback. Okay. So anyway, um, when we went through this process, I put together a panel of three Illinois chiefs. Um, they, uh, each of them gave a couple of questions to be asked during the interview process. Uh, Leeds had interviewed six people, uh, one of them being an internal, uh, police officer from OPD. We, uh, interviewed six, uh, candidates. The, I did, sat in on those interviews, but I did not do any of the questions nor did my ranking or rating of those individuals go into consideration for the hiring. Uh, so of those questions that were asked, they were ranked on a Likert scale of zero, two, three. Zero means that they didn't hit the, the answer at all. One mean that they could have had some improvement in the answer. Two means that the answer was acceptable by standards. And three means they really were exceptional in the answer. So after all those questions were asked and answered, and the, um, if the three individual chiefs ranked everybody. And of the rankings, Scott Pavlok, far and away, was the top ranked person. And then that goes down from one through six. Um, I looked at, we looked at the top two, actually. After Scott Pavlok rescinded his interest, the mayor and I spoke again to the second one, uh, on the list, who came up, who was ranked number two in that. And, um, after interviewing with him for a extensive period of time, he left and the next day said that he was rescinding his interest as well. Uh, he did cite that he was offered another position that night, um, but he also had some other comments off the record of, of why he would not be interested in coming here. So now we get smack, hit in the face with, uh, coronavirus and everything else being sheltered in place and things going on. So I felt that at this time, could we just take a step back and breathe? And I looked at the Illinois Chief Association, who has a linebacker program. In the linebacker program, they give us a, a couple of retired chiefs of police, uh, who would be, uh, suitable for their needs here. And that's why we looked at the linebacker program, just to take a step back, so we don't act hasty. This has nothing to do with Chief Novak's opinion of who gets hired. He wasn't involved in the interview process, uh, any step of the way. So it, I don't, it, I don't think it has anything to, I personally don't feel it has anything to do with what chief's preferences are. Would anybody else like to comment on that?
Yeah, I'm gonna comment. Uh, we, the, in the process that we used, the interview process by three distinguished chiefs from the area, uh, we thought that was the best way to go. It, uh, it took any, uh, politics out of the, out of the issue. And, uh, I believe since our mentoring program, uh, felt far short, felt a little short of what I'd like to have done, that this was the best way for the city of Ogles- uh, city of Oglesby.
Did the three chiefs interview the linebackers? Or did we interview any of the linebackers for that matter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And yes and no. Answer, answer your question. Um, no, I did not have the three chiefs interview the linebacker. However, I had spoken to, um, I didn't, I only spoke to two of the three chiefs, uh, that did the interviews. I was not able to get a hold of the third one. And talked about the linebacker program, which they both highly recommended. They were part of the, the Illinois Chiefs Association. And, um, when I mentioned the person that we were sending forth, it was that case, they both had favorable things to say about him, as well as the program itself. Now, the Illinois Chiefs Association has fully vetted all the candidates that would be out there, available for, um, taking on something. That, and what I liked about this program is it is just an interim. We are not hiring this person to be the chief of police for Oglesby forever, never. It is an interim or a bridge to help us from Chief Novak leaving until the decision of, uh, who is going to be that next person. Uh, this, uh, linebackers, what they're usually skilled at and what he'll be tasked with is bringing together some of the, the, uh, the outlined issues that are, they're still in the department, um, uh, doing some, uh, mentoring, uh, of some of the people to be, either be able to move up in the, in their current position at the, at the OPD or, um, and helping to bring in some programs that maybe have some interest to get involved in the community. And this is all, the timing is just also bad with the coronavirus and, and six feet apart and everything else. So it's so, such a difficult situation right now.
Part of the idea is to bring the department together. And so I'm just gonna make the comment now while I can, that with the coronavirus pandemic, I, I really feel that somebody from Oglesby that knows people from Oglesby, you know, everyone knows everyone in town. That's why I'm highly against an interim from out of the area, because if it gets worse, which everyone thinks it's going to get worse, I would much rather have somebody that knows citizens of Oglesby, knows how this town works a lot better.
Over management leadership skills, you'd rather have somebody who knows people of Oglesby?
So there's no one in the police department that has management skills or leadership?
Not those man in the.
Not even on an interim basis?
No.
No? Really? Okay. I'm surprised.
I, I have a couple of questions for you, Gary.
Absolutely.
You mentioned that the problem is in the department. What's the problem?
Well, I believe at the last committee, you said that there were still problems there.
Right. But I haven't added her for how many months?
At the last.
I thought this was gonna get taken care of with a new commissioner. I mean, usually that's how it's handled. I mean, if there's a problem, you need to address the problem.
Absolutely. Um, and I have attempted to do that. And if you'll let me answer that question before you ask the next one. Um, I have made attempts to solve some of those issues and problems. And what has happened is, uh, at, at the beginning, everybody seemed to be, except for one or, or two people, um, and even those said that they just wanna move on. Uh, everybody seemed to be in a place where they wanted to just get going and move on. Um, it's only been in the last month. And I can say that has a lot to do with the COVID nineteen and, and sheltering in place and not being able to do a lot of face to faces I like to, to do. Um, and the announcement of the chief retiring and us doing interviews instead of simply replacing from within. Um, very two, uh, two candidates from within, Assistant Chief Marcus or Sergeant Pudia. It was my decision, I, I will say that, to open up the interview process and to make it, uh, less biased by doing so.
Well, you, now, with this, this new interim chief, I understand he lives outside the city limits. He's gonna be an interim chief. What's gonna be his duties? I mean, is he gonna be, is he gonna be a, a forty hour a week officer? Is he gonna handle calls? Is he gonna, I mean, when we came into this council, my biggest beef on this was, we have one guy out there at all times. It's not safe.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Who, who you are, it's not safe. Things change, people, he, cops are probably the most hated people right now. And I always felt, that was my biggest beef, was I wanted two people on every shift. And for some reason, an interim is giving the department a bad name because of the fact that you have people there that have been there fifteen years or better, that have, have good rapport with the people in town. And this has been brought to me by other people in town. Why are we doing this? And I says, you need to talk to them. I says, I, you know, I, I feel that there's five people in there that can keep, uh, we have one guy.
Five, people didn't apply for it though.
Well, you kind of put a, a little dim when you put degrees in, in the paper or you put, uh.
What's wrong with making sure they're qualified? One of the interviews, our interviews wasn't even qualified for the paper advertisement. You got an interview, so.
The problem, we, we didn't.
Now, we made, we made sure that everybody from Oglesby was in. Was in an manager position?
But then now, we had people in there that were patrol officers that never even had a, never had a brass position of any kind. No supervi- no supervisor. They're, I, I, yes, there was one or two. Why were they, why were they looked at? We got a guy in there with twenty-two years that's working on a master's degree. And I mean, he just, I mean, you know, he's, he's, he's a patrolman. He's never gonna go nowhere while he's here, because he has a different job, uh, coming up. This guy, he has, he has a master's degree. He, you mentioned that in the first meeting we had down there before we took place, that you had a master's and that you felt you should have had your choice of positions. And that's not the case. Commissioner Curran says, I feel that it should be given out by, by, uh.
Do you have a question?
By people that, uh, had experience.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to give him the question.
What's your question?
My question? Are you, are you just asking?
So we're.
Can't debate anymore?
We're technically, we're technically on public comment on agenda items only.
I'm just saying, you, you're saying that there's no, you can put out, you wanted a degree, you wanted something like this. We had officers. We had officers apply for the job. You know, we have a guy in the department that has twenty-two years here. He, he's, he's working on a master's degree. I mean, you, you just don't get a master's degree. You, you told me about that. You said, and I think Mr. Curran, you have a master's, and I think Mr. Augur.
I do not have a master's degree.
You don't?
No.
I do, just to clarify.
Okay. If, I mean, you're looking at somebody that has knowledge and stuff. I mean, you know, if you can't get somebody off of your, your, uh, list of candidates to come in here, then you go outside to the chief's department and ask for somebody that they recommend. Why can't you just talk to the, some of the officers inside the department? And, 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 I mean, they're not stupid. They've been here long enough, they know what's going on. But the people in town feel it's bad and that the, the officers feel betrayed. That, that there's nobody, that you guys are looking at as, there's nobody good enough to run the department.
So since we're, we're technically on public comment on agenda items only, uh, I mean, since we're talking about this, though, I, I'll weigh in on my comments on it, I suppose. Um, I didn't have a problem the way it was handled with the people we selected. I thought that was a great thing. Though, don't get me wrong, by selecting somebody that's, that's local, uh, it makes it more convenient. But to me, it's always been about finding the right person for the job, the best qualified person. If that happens to be somebody that is local, that makes it so much more convenient, so easy. Matter of fact, that was my comments about somebody, if we were gonna hire out, does that skill set translate over well enough into Oglesby because we're a smaller community? And I thought the answer was, yes, it did. However, our number one, our number two, they weren't viable candidates. I think this linebacker program is fantastic for that because you yourself have said you thought we had to have a new chief of police. I don't necessarily know if, I agree with that. Um, I don't see necessarily some, the problems that, that were there between the policies and procedures. But I can admit that there were problems between some kind of disconnect of how things were being held here, right? I don't know if that's at the commissioner, I don't know if it's at the chief level, I don't know if it's with the officers. I do not know. To me, one of the advantages of getting somebody that is not local. To me, one of the advantages of getting somebody that is not local is you get a fresh set of eyes, you get somebody that's completely impartial. This linebacker program, I actually like it. I like the idea that we are getting somebody on an interim basis that is overly qualified for the position, has experience in the same realm, even, I think they even had larger municipalities than us, I believe. So there's a depth of experience there. I think that's fantastic that we can get somebody in here that can help us with our policies, procedures. Take a look, see if they can find where that disconnect is that we couldn't see ourselves because we were just all local people looking at it. Maybe there's too many hard feelings, maybe there's too many politics. I don't know what the answer is. But I like the idea of somebody coming in here that's excessively qualified to see if we can solve the policies, the procedures, the labor, the union-related stuff, the watch schedule, see if we can solve all of those kinds of things. And then we start this process over again and find the best individual. And maybe, maybe six months from now, when we look for somebody, maybe when we re-interview, maybe that new level of experience. I hope some of the same people apply again. Maybe they'll be the best candidate at that point in time. To me, it's always been about finding the absolute best candidate for the job.
And that would be one of the things that this linebacker would be doing is mentoring and building the people that we have internally.
So he won't be working from home? He'll be here five days a week?
He will not be working from home, he'll be here forty hours a week.
Okay. But as a council, you three knew about these guys coming in and applying for the jobs?
What?
I don't, first of all, I don't know anything about you three.
I mean, Ms. Wieski's talking about her and the mayor, and then you're talking about the three people that were interviewed.
I wasn't talking about anybody that was interviewed.
You made the comment about the two people that...
I said the two, the two, the number one and number two that were offered the opportunity, it did not work out.
Of those that were originally interviewed.
Part of, Jim, part of the thing. If we, if we, if you have a problem and you keep looking at it with the same set of eyes, you're looking right past the problem. By bringing in the linebacker program, we're gonna be bringing in somebody with a different set of eyes. And hopefully, we'll be able to identify what the problem is, what the issues are, so we can work to get them resolved and make the Oglesby, the police department the best they can be.
Yeah, I understand that, Mayor. But what I'm saying is, in the same voice, I'm sorry I have to be vocal, but I just feel that I have to get this out. When, I mean, for the first two people that were interviewed and given the chief's job, I was never told about this. I had no idea what was going on. I never got an email that we're gonna be looking at hiring this guy or going to this guy. Don't you think it should be brought and put in front of the council where we can talk about this?
I actually thought I'd send emails out to everybody.
I don't believe I got it.
I'm not sure what you're talking, I'm very confused right now.
Especially with the sex interviews.
I didn't get the names of them either. I just got the thing of what you selected and what you thought was best, and I got that. The only other emails I remember that came out was, for example, you shared the letter with us, which I believe should not have been made public. Because I think that's a black eye for Oglesby to...
Boy, it could have been made public soon if I found out.
I'm not sure if that, I'm not sure if somebody...
Yeah, hide it.
Is that something that's foible? Somebody puts a letter of why they don't want to accept the position, is that foible? Maybe it is.
Another thing is, you know, another thing is, it was never brought to my attention, and you scolded at me a long time ago when I appointed a new chief. You scolded at me and said, well, I feel it was wrong because it was never brought to my attention what your plans were.
It wasn't so much that you appointed a new chief, but you removed the other chief without any due process. That's the bigger problem. Don't get me wrong, if this would be a different...
Due process, look it up. The last chief was removed without due process.
And you said that was wrong. You talked about how wrong that was, and then you did the same thing.
That was in the works, that was in the paper five, six months before they removed him. They were on a boat ride up and down the river.
Two wrongs don't make a right.
That wasn't wrong.
I just, I had a vacancy, I had a vacancy and I filled it, okay? I had a vacancy and I filled it, that's all I got to say. I got some questions, I'll ask you later.
All right, thank you.
But I don't wanna drag this down.
Let's just move on?
Yes.
No more public comments at this time.
No more?
Nobody else has called in or emailed.
Okay. I need a motion and second to approve the bills as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented for payment.
I'll second.
Agubright?
Aye.
Cullenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Wieski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Next on air is approve the quarterly building permits report. Have a total of two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-fifty dollars that was submitted by Brian Spelich, building inspector. So I need a motion and second to approve it.
I'll make it.
I would make a motion for the approval of the quarterly building permits report.
I'll second.
Agubright?
Aye.
Cullenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Wieski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Next is a closed session. The employment, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of a specific employee or legal counsel for the public body. Also collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representative or deliberation concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. ILCS one-two-zero slash two, C and, what do I call that? C and one?
I'll make that motion.
C, C, C and one.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Agubright?
Aye.
Cullenin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Wieski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
We're gonna go upstairs, we're just gonna cut the feed. Do we?
Yeah, can we just cut the feed?
We just cut the feed, you want to go downstairs?
Well, then we won't be able to be six feet apart.
We can't be six feet apart if we go downstairs.
You can cut the feed and we can probably go in there if you wanted to. Or leave the feed go. I don't...
We go outside.
Can we just, can we just cut the feed and just stay here?
Attorney?
With the webcam, I don't think we can.
You can cut it, I suppose, and go live again.
Well, we'd probably be better, I think we'd probably be better if we went downstairs. I don't like cutting live feeds.
Squirt off.
Yeah, we could do that.
We can go in here, that's fine.
Sure.
Those chairs are weak.
You can spread out.
Yeah, it's bigger.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just spread out here.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of just cutting the live feed.
Okay.
That could be an exact problem. We're in uncharted territory here.
There was a lot of leeway at the governor.
Nobody did, we're in uncharted territory.
Now we're reported twice.
We'd be better on time.
Oh.
Do you see mine? Will you know what I'm doing?
You may have to speak up. I don't know.
I don't know how hard it is to go through your desk.
Let's just, anyway, I have a question. We are trying to speak with distance by staying approximately six feet apart. So I ask everyone, all the elected officials, please try to speak up because obviously we're recording this. And I'm just not so sure how accurate that might be. I'm concerned that that might come from distance, so it's possible a lot of...
Okay, can you try to... Agubright?
Here.
Cullenin?
Here.
Wieski?
Yes.
Revara?
Here.
We're here, we have to do, uh, the linebacker, that's the, I don't know, there's nothing on here. There's not a, no, it's not a, I mean, maybe I have a different, it's not, it's not... Um, probably, in the, in the, that would be good. Um, because, um, we might be both with, uh, and, and, not saying that, but, um, but from the, the president of the Illinois Chiefs Association, um, he, I saw that that line above, that he does for us, he, uh, he said that he has a couple of people that have been to, that, 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 you know, in, 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 um, two days, and then he said, um, he does, uh, he has, 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 uh, he